The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome back, everybody. We are going to start with our program review. Maybe, maybe not.
We'll have a History Day.
Okay, let's change that. We're not starting with our program review. We are going to start with our History Day contestants that are in the room. You guys want to come up?
Sure.
I really do.
I told them they didn't have to go to speech, so can we pay these?
Yeah, you get to look at us because we're cool.
She almost got us.
All right. Good job, you guys. All right, so we appreciate you guys taking some time and adding us to your agenda at the last minute. We just had some really exciting news for DIS over the weekend. So just a little bit of background, our Advanced Language Arts class is taught by Teresa Campbell and Heidi O'Donnell, they're back there. And a big part of what the sixth grade class does is work on a History Day project. It is an extensive research project that culminates with the students participating in the History Day competition. And so we had a number of teams from DIS do really well. We had some teams qualify for state. I'm going to make sure that I get this all correct. So what happened is, they went to regionals. We had five qualify for state from DIS. From these five teams who competed at state over the weekend, two of them received an honorable mention, which is wonderful and very exciting. And we had one team that placed second place overall. And they are standing in front of you. This is Oliver Berg and Bobby Schleif. Give them their hand. So their presentation was called, I'm going to read it so I get it right. It's called "The Fight for the Electric Automobile: A Frontier for a More Efficient, Ecological, and Safe Way of Travel." And so they did a performance and they did a wonderful job. The first, the top two teams get to go. Now, this is historic for Delano. Never, ever had a team from Delano in any grade go to Nationals. Nationals will be in June, they'll be in Washington DC. I want to have Ms. Campbell and Ms. O'Donnell come up here to you. I'm going to have Ms. Campbell just speak a little bit about these fine young men and what she thinks sets them apart and getting to go to Nationals. So say a quick few words about them.
Sure. Oliver and Bobby represent exactly what this project is. From following a theme that is set every year by National History Day, choosing a topic and then choosing their, what they want to base it on, either a performance documentary board or a website. And they chose a performance. And from researching, analyzing, determining how to describe their project and how it fits into the theme, their hard work, determination, drive, persistence, like overcoming, working together, everything, they demonstrated it. They took feedback from the local competition here in Delano and fixed their project. They took feedback from the regional competition and fixed their project. And then performed at state. And their determination and hard work showed off with the results of a second place end result and a national qualifier, so.
We're just incredibly proud of all of our students and especially these guys. They're frontier in putting Delano on the map at Nationals. It's the perfect theme for, for Delano this year too, because you guys are now part of the frontier of history for Delano. So we will forever talk about you as the first ones. So thank you for paving the way for us, you guys. And we are incredibly excited to see what you do at Nationals. And you know, maybe our first time there, we'll bring home a national championship on top of it. If anyone can do it, it's these guys. We believe in them. So good job, you guys.
Good job.
Thank you.
Oh, I thought we were going to grill them for a while.
You know, they got grilled in the competition. I don't know if they want to be grilled again. All right, moving on to our program report. Sorry about that. Realized that was me. Madam Chair, Superintendent Shane, members of the board, thank you so much for allowing me to come and present the Stakeholder Engagement Report, which was a compilation of many different engagements over the course of December, January. And I'm just really thrilled. Congratulations, guys. That's awesome. So what a wonderful example you have there. So, and I always have to follow students and it's just never as fun. But my name is Susan Brott. I'm with CSO Communications. And I was the one who kind of came out here, some of you might remember. I came out, well, we, we had to keep rescheduling because we were having snowstorms. So I conducted the, facilitated a student survey that we can talk a little bit about. We did that as well. So, and I was here for the community conversation, the focus groups. So that is me, my, our firm, we, I used to do communications. I was a director of communications in four different school districts in the Twin Cities. And so I very much understand what's going on here. And it's been an honor to be out here in Delano. So just really quickly, I, it looks like there's a lot of slides. I'm going to go really quickly through them because you all have a copy of the full report. But I do want to hit some of the highlights. So we do have an engagement process. I'll kind of just talk quickly about what we did, just a little bit of the data because I think the student survey data is really poignant. And as somebody who always loves to elevate student voice, I think that's important. Just some key findings and then recommendations. So the first thing we did was the engagement process. What did it call? So I'm just kind of like nodding, we can keep going. So the engagement activities, you know, really the goals of those was to create a safe space for all students, especially, or all voices, especially students to share their experiences, really focusing on climate, culture, and how they feel in the schools. And to explore strategies to enhance a culture of communication and engagement, and then obviously to inform future plans. And so that was part of our goals as we came here. As far as the engagements that we did, we did the, we can go to the, so the students took a survey in December. It was originally planned to be during advisory and then there was a two hour later, I don't know, we just kept having snowstorms, which is evident by your river. And so we did get it administered that week in December. We had 803 participant students since grade seven through 12. We had, and then we also did focus groups with students. And so you can see that from their, the focus groups, we had both students and staff focus groups, and then we did a community conversation. So what does the data show us? The data, again, with that survey, we had 803 responses, 802, 3, there was one that was kind of like a halfway, they went through. We had an 85% completion rate, which is a really strong completion rate. And we, the average time that students took was a little over five minutes on it. So student participation, I can just kind of quickly go through these and you can look at them. I won't go too, too deep about them. But we had a nice distribution by grade, the highest, the most students that took it were in seventh grade, but we had a pretty even distribution of students by grade. And if we look at their participation by race, ethnicity, students had the opportunity to self-identify their race and ethnicity. 84% were white. And then we had, followed by, the next largest group was those who identified as more than one race, ethnicity, which was 6%. And then 4% of the students opted not to identify because we always allow that. Similarly, we asked them to self-identify their gender, as would expected. About half were identified as a girl or a woman, half identified as a man or a boy. We had 3% identifying as non-binary. And then 3% chose not to participate, or not to answer that question, opted not to do that. So really looking at some, we had four key areas that we looked at. We asked questions and we just said, how would you rate these strongly agree, agree, disagree, strongly disagree, a standard Likert scale? So when it came to learner experience, you can see that you really had some positive responses there in terms of students enjoying their learning. 86% of students say that they're greeted by name in their school, by some adult in their school, whether it's a teacher or someone else, which I can tell you doing the survey in other districts, it's not always there. So that was a really positive thing to be noting. But you generally had about three-fourths of students really supportive in terms of their feeling resilient, feeling that their learner experience was good. 72% of students saying that they enjoy learning, which is really strong, although if you have things like History Day, it makes learning really fun, right? So the last two questions, I do want to note about this, two statements. There was a statement that said, do you feel like you have to be careful about what you say? And 80% of students agreed with that. But you have to kind of think about it in terms of, it could be, 80% of students are concerned about what they're saying and how they're saying it. But it could also be like, yep, I just think about what I say and I don't. So I mean, there's a, there's, it could be positive or negative. So either students are carefully considering what they're saying, which is a positive thing, they're not just speaking out of turn. But they also could be a little bit more worried about what they're saying. So that kind of leads into the hesitate to share ideas, where just about a little over half reported feeling a little hesitant to share their ideas. As far as belonging, again, you had a strong feeling of belonging by a lot of students in the school. The differences really start to get broken down when you start looking at disaggregating their groups. And so I think a key point to kind of feeling, noting there is that 56% of students said they do not feel, because the question was, you feel pressure to conform? 44% said yes, but 56 did not agree with that statement. So that's a strong statement. And then also when asking if they just fit, do they feel like they fit in? And you had 29% of students feeling that they just don't fit in with other people. And so while it is a minority, as educators, we're always concerned about what that means going forward. This one, I just broke out a specific question. And the question was, how long did it take you to feel like you belong at Delano High School? And so the majority, 59% said they felt they were accepted and felt like they belonged right away. 15% said it took them until the end of September, 13% by the end of the first quarter. And then as of December, when they took the survey, about 13% said they're still not feeling like they fit in. And so those are the kinds of things that we'd like to pull back. Obviously, the responses were confidential and anonymous, but things that the school can use to sort of say, how do we get this moving forward? And how do we make sure that all students feel like they belong? Yes?
You don't include benchmarks in here. I'm guessing there's reason for that.
It's, as far as the belonging questions.
Yeah, like what's an average? What's acceptable?
I think, I think it's really hard to do that now, because when we used to do these before pandemic, the results are very different now, post-pandemic. And so we don't really have any good benchmarks. I know that there was some studies, actually, I was just reading about last week, about belonging and feeling like comfortable at school. And there's so much variance about how that pandemic has impacted that. So I don't really have good numbers for you right now, because I think people are still trying to figure out how to be in the same room with each other. If that makes sense?
Yep.
Okay. Yep. When we look at empathy and the, you know, key factor of feeling culture, or feeling like they belong in school, again, you had very strong, you know, two-thirds, three to three-fourths percent of students feeling like they carefully listen to other people's points, saying that they frequently cared about other people's opinions and what they're saying and their feelings. And so you have a strong level of empathy, although there are opportunities for, to dig in a little bit in terms of, you know, when you say 68% of students said they were frequently able to remain calm even when someone was bothering them or saying bad things. And I know that's hard for us as adults as well. So what does that mean when you start digging into that? And so how are we making sure that students are able to feel, feel empathy and provide empathy? So, and again, I'm kind of going through these really quickly. We asked two kind of categories when it came to school environment, how the impact, how the environment, the school environment impacts them personally? And then how they feel that the, the environment impacts others and their perception of that. So when we think about how it affects them personally, when there were questions of whether or not students felt they were feeling like they're physically and emotionally safe at school, you had 78% saying that. Nearly 80% of students reported feeling valued for their academic abilities, similarly for their physical abilities. But they were concerns about, and there were a lot of comments when we looked at the open-ended comments about it, when you started saying policies and procedures are enforced fairly, their interpretation of fairly or equally across genders or race or different groups, there were some, some concerns that came up. And I think that came up a lot in the focus groups as well, of just how that is applied. When you look at the impact on others with the school environment, the students have the perception that, that, you know, people are being valued regardless of their differences. Again, a little bit of a dip, most of the time was around gender and their perception of whether or not things are, people are being treated the same regardless of gender. So I can't say what exactly that means, but it's just a comment and you can dig deeper into the data. And then we did ask signs about the safe space for everyone signs. First, we asked about their general awareness of it. And the majority, the far, by far, the majority are obviously aware of it. Most said that they've noticed them for a long time, many, many years. Some said they really only started noticing them when they started becoming a conversation in the community. That was about 20%. And then you had 16% who just said that they were not aware of them. And then we asked them about their attitude towards the signs and really gave them the idea, they gave the option to say, I appreciate the signs, I don't care about the signs, or I do not feel the signs are appropriate. And you had 83% who were kind of just okay with the signs. Whether it's 38% said they appreciated them and 21%, whoops, I didn't add that number right. 38 and 21, it's not 83, sorry.
Yep.
Yeah, you're like, wait a minute, that doesn't add up. So, so you had 59% saying that they were favorable. And then you had 17% that were, that were not appreciative of them. So actually, it is supposed to be 45%. It just doesn't say the right number on there.
Which one, on don't care?
Oh, yes. Sorry, that is my bad, so. Because that then adds up to 783. So it is 83% and it adds up and it's 17%. I just, the chart is wrong, apparently, so. But anyway, that there are differences of opinions about attitude about those signs. And I think I just, in terms of the survey, there were just some key takeaways that I had. And I just wanted to sort of say, when you do start breaking those down, and again, the full report has them broken down by grade, by gender, and by race, ethnicity. When you look at grade level, the younger, the younger the student, they tended to be more positive about issues of school climate. Probably not surprisingly, they're newer to the school, they're not feeling, they haven't lived through experiences of school, whatever that is. Grade 12 showed the most intensity. And what I mean by that is they were much more apt to say strongly agree or strongly disagree. They were more in that intense area. And the most negative grade tended to be the 11th grade. They were kind of not satisfied, they were more dissatisfied with things. When you look at race, ethnicity, students of color responses were lower in agreement than white students. And then when you look at gender, overall, boys seemed to be the most favorable. Non-binary students were significantly less positive about their experiences. And it really depended on the statement of whether or not girls aligned more with where the boys were feeling or whether it was non-binary. So it kind of depended on the statement around learning experience, belonging, student climate, of where they, where they felt they landed there. Are there any questions on the survey? Again, there's a lot more data in there for you to review, but we just kind of wanted to hit some of those high points. Then the rest of this, we'll go through really quickly. Yeah?
Given our response rate in your experience, is that a rate that would give us the ability to make generalizations about our students?
Yeah. Yes, you had a very strong response rate, especially considering it was like, oh, well, we'll try to do this other way. And teachers were asked to fit it in. I don't know, I know the principal can speak more specifically to how that worked out. But I know, I would say that yes, I think it's very projectable that way. I think you had a good distribution and a large enough cell size in terms of grades. I think, as I noted in the report, it's hard to make a lot of projection around gender and race because the, the set is so small, which is why I would just group them all as say, students of color, as opposed to black students, Asian students, Hispanic students. So it's hard to project that. But I often say, it's, but yes, it's still interesting data that you should be looking into. And I, I know the school is looking into that to say, okay, so what does this mean for us as we plan?
Thank you.
So as we think about, we did student focus groups and we did staff focus groups. So we had three groups of students. We kind of grouped them into 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12. There were 35 students in total with the focus, oh, I'm sorry.
Can you clarify the staff breakout? So was it, there was 7 through 9 staff?
Yep, we had two groups.
Okay.
Yep. Yep, so the staff group, you had the 7 through 9th grade staff they were affiliated with, and then the 10th through 12th grade staff was just kind of...
And was there only three staff, one for each grade level?
No, there's 22 members total.
Yeah, because it says one each, grade 7 through 9, 10 through...
Oh, just one each group, one group each for the 7 through 9.
And a group of 10.
So there were two focus groups, one for grade 7 through 9, one for grade 10 through 12, 22 staff members total.
11 each.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think it was exactly even, but yes, something like that.
Okay.
Is that clear?
Yep.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
When you did your student focus groups, were they mixed grade groups or did you focus by 7, 8?
Yeah, so the focus group was just, so there were just 7th and 8th graders in one group, just 9th and 10th graders in a group, and 11th and 12th graded in a group. And the school did a great job about, and I know that the principal and the counselors and the teachers all tried to make sure that there was a good mix of students in those focus groups. So more representative. But again, focus groups are small, they're qualitative data. So you know, what we'd often do with those is say, okay, take the survey, which is broader, is there things that we want to probe a little bit more into? And so that helped us sort of dig out, dig some of that information out. And I just put up a couple of word clouds. So when we look at students and we, and then the question was, you know, how would you describe the school climate here? Give me a word or two that gives that. And so you can see how those came out with obviously a typical word cloud, the bigger the lowered, the more common that, that phrase was. And then when you look at the staff one, it also says it's more about improving and, if we can go to the next slide, more about improving, recovering, supportive. I will say that both the staff and the students, when we asked about that, when I said, give me one or two words, they all said that this year was going better than last year for multitudes of reasons. It was a post-pandemic year, you know, just kind of, we're all back, we're not masking or whatever. So those kinds of questions, those sorts of statements were made. And they all, they wanted to make sure that it was very clear that, you know, things were getting better.
On the other one, what do you, what do you guess underrepresented means?
There was a lot of conversation in the focus groups about not feeling that their experience was being valued or represented in the larger conversation at the school around school climate. So it could be a student who felt, you know, whether it's because of my, my religion, my gender, my background, whatever my identity is, felt like they were not being represented and not in the larger school climate.
Thank you.
So if we look at the school climate, my name is, just kind of pulled out here some data that show that, again, you know, it's, it's improving. When I, they were asked to give it like a 1, 2, 3, 4, or 5 score. And so really looking at, you know, very favorable to not at all favorable, where it's the 1, 2, 3, 4, or 5. So you saw a lot of that saying, oh, somewhat favorable. Staff were definitely leaning a little bit more positive than those particular students were. The students were feeling a little frustrated. The student focus groups, they were very vocal, they did not keep anything back. And, but I also think that it was an opportunity that students had to just share something with somebody who they don't know and just share openly with it. They were very, very good about it. And I told them that, you know, I'm not reporting who's saying what or anything like that, but I took down all the notes, yeah.
Out of curiosity, on those Word webs on the web page, you know, the student one particularly caught my eye, there's substantially more negative comments, it appears, than positive comments. But yet, the results from almost all of our questions are like 75% favorable, 25 not.
The survey.
Is that common to see almost a complete inverse in a Word web based on?
I mean, I think, you know, you're basing that on 35 kids.
Sure.
So, you know, it just so happens. And I don't think that the 35 kids were chosen to, because they were negative. I think that they were chosen because they just represented different groups in the school. They, they definitely were more negative in their comments in the focus groups. I wouldn't say it's necessarily typical, but I think when you start digging into the questions a little bit more, but that, you know, that's the very first question I said was, give me one or, they voted and they got to say, give me one or two, you know, words that you would use to describe the climate. And that was what they shared. And that definitely skewed the older the student. The older the student, the more negative they were. Until you got to 12th grade, and then they kind of came back around to positive. So some of that is adolescence, you know?
Did they have to give their own word? Or could they see others' words and build on?
Nope, they just, I just went around the table and everybody had to give me a word or two, so.
So they heard everybody else's?
If they were at the end, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, if they were first. But you know, I mean, and I can't say were those, you know, with that group of students, so you had, you know, about 10 to 12 students in a group. I just said, okay, you give me a word, you give me a word, you give me a word, you give me a word. And so I gave them time to all think of their word, and then, and then they offered it up. So yes, sometimes it would be like, oh yeah, that's what I think. But some of them were like, no, this is great. But they definitely skewed more negative. I would say that the group of middle school, the 7th and 8th grade students were, you know, first of all, they just aren't as forthcoming. Kind of, I mean, I work with students all the time, they just, you have to pull things out of them. But they're like, it's fine. You know, I'm sure if you go home and talk to a middle school student, how was your day? It was fine, you know, kind of thing. So, but I think the older the student, what's that?
Is there a question of, have you gone to Delano your whole life or have you moved here?
I, I did ask, not in the survey, but I did ask that in focus groups when students would talk about it. And there was, the majority of them said, yes, I've gone through most of the time. There was a number, there were, I could, I can still remember, you know, a student saying, well, I just moved here a couple of years ago and it's way better than it was where I was, you know, where I was, or...
There's aggressive, cleaner theory, and it's usually not, or sometimes it is.
Absolutely, yeah. And there was a number, there was a few students who had gone maybe to a private school or some other option before coming to the high school, so. But there was, yeah, the majority said that they had been in the district for a while.
Can I ask you a question on the climate at DHS, the student versus staff?
Mm-hmm.
I'm seeing 60% of our staff say it's somewhat favorable versus favorable or very. And did they, were they able to give reasons or was this a part of the...
This was just a quick, you know, give me a 1, 2, 3, 4, or 5 kind of thing. Certainly the rest of the focus groups, we probed that more. So we asked questions about, why do you say that? And I just didn't want to spend all the slides on there. But if you, if you look in the, in the, in the report, and I can actually pull up some of that a little bit, just to reference that. But the focus groups, they did respond to many more questions. And in the appendix, I think I actually included the, the questions that we went through. But, you know, we asked questions about, you know, what are the benefits and the challenges of being a student at Delano? And we asked the students that, and we asked the staff that. And, you know, there was a lot of really wonderful things that they said about being a student at Delano. But, you know, the thing that the student and the staff both articulated as the number one benefit was also the challenge, was the small town. That it's a benefit because we get to know each other, we have lots of opportunities, but it's also a challenge because everybody knows you and you, you know, or something like that. So it was both, it kind of played out both ways. And then I really think that the questions about, so what can teachers do, what can staff do, what can students do to improve the climate? That's where we really got dug in and got some great ideas about that. That was not on the survey, obviously, so we kind of dug a little bit deeper. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. So as far as the community conversation then, a lot, I know several of you were there. We had about 115 to 120 people attend. And I know we were moving chairs around and trying to make everything fit in the tiger den, tiger, is that what their rooms called? Okay. But we went through and as you know, the, the conversation was very structured, they had table facilitators, and it was a really lively, there was lots of talking going on. And so I didn't see anybody leaving a huff or anything, so that was pretty good. But it was the first of that kind of engagement for people. I think in, and I shared, we did post, you know, exit survey kind of things, and we asked them to fill those out. And I've shared all those back with Superintendent. But, you know, most of them, I would say, were very favorable about the experience and wanting to have more of those kinds of experiences. And my, and in my experience doing these kinds of conversations in communities, and I've done one exactly like this in a community in Missouri, the post-pandemic thing is, oh my gosh, we're finally talking to one another, you know, because I feel like all we do is talk behind a screen. And so the fact that they actually had an opportunity to talk and to listen to people and their experiences was very favorable. There were a few people who were, who were concerned about the conversation from the standpoint of, I didn't really, I didn't know what it was going to be like, I thought it was going to be more of an open forum kind of thing, so, you know, that's all in how we talk about it beforehand. But we focused on questions about belonging, what does it mean to you? So you can see, kind of, here are some examples of, I just pulled out the top ones that come out. I really loved the statement from one of the people, because I had all those chart papers and I documented all of them, and again, those are in the appendix, but, you know, people miss me when I'm gone, that's what it means to feel like you belong. And I thought that was a pretty, pretty powerful statement. And then we kind of said, so what's at the heart of the matter when we talk about belonging? So really getting at, you know, why do you feel that way about belonging? And there were lots of concerns about what, what might be happening or not happening at school, concerns about how have recent conversations impacted the reputation of the school and the district? But also really identifying that, you know, a lot of the reasons that I believe this are rooted in my personal beliefs, my faith, my family values, my experiences. And so really allowing people to have those conversations, and I facilitate a lot of conversations of people who do not agree about things, and that the point of this conversation is not to debate each other, it's to listen and just to understand those different conversations, so, and perspectives. So I think that when I look at the key findings overall, and this is looking at the conversation, the focus groups and the survey, I kind of went through and we found some really key themes going through all of them. So if you think about the topic of belonging, there was a very strong, no matter what the engagement activity was, that everyone belongs in Delano. So they really want to make sure that all students, regardless of their background, feel welcomed, feel like they belong at the high school, and feel assured that it's a place where they can be their authentic selves, and that came out a lot, whatever you define that authentic self to be. Everyone has a right to feel safe and included, and I think that's only growing more in schools across the country unfortunately because of events. But that feeling of safety both physically and emotionally and mentally, so really trying to make sure that they feel included. And then there was a common theme about focusing on the needs of each and every student, so really looking at the individual student and not just grouping and saying, oh, you know, you're in 7th grade and this is how it is. So I think it's, that really was a theme that people want to make sure that we're personalizing that experience for them. When I think about engagement, there was a lot of talk of, let's really start listening to students. You are doing a lot of that already, so it's not like, well, let's start doing that, that's probably not the right way to say it. But to make sure that we keep elevating students and no matter what level they are, and let them advocate for themselves and take some ownership of their learning. And then really engaging stakeholders, so I think there was a hunger for wanting to do more conversations, more focus groups, more, just more engagement, trying to build that partnership between the school and the home. When you think about school climate, I think that there was a lot of conversation about making sure every perspective had the opportunity to be heard. And there was a lot of discussions about, you know, maybe certain adults only want to hear certain things, whether that's teachers or parents or community members, and making sure that everyone has the opportunity to have their voice heard. A lot of conversation amongst students and staff about making sure that negative behaviors are addressed at the school, whatever those are, every school has them, and differences of how, how that happens. And so knowing that there's a lot of data privacy that comes in with, with discipline kinds of things and consequences, how can we still make sure that there's like a restorative process to make sure that people feel that I was heard, you harmed me, how are we going to work together in recognizing that they're, that they're, they're children? And how do we do that in a way that helps them grow and learn? And then all students, allowing students to have those challenging conversations. Many of the students articulated a desire to want to have opportunities in class or in places that they feel safe at school, in classrooms where it's a good conversation. And maybe it's a challenging topic, but let's be able to talk about it in a way that helps me learn about the topic and not just be told what it is. So it's getting back to that, don't teach me what to think, teach me how to think kind of conversation. And then finally, when we talk about leadership, there was just a desire amongst all groups to say, you know, like, let's make sure that we're really creating a lot of transparency about what's happening. I would say that that's been a buzzword for a long time, that people will claim you're not being transparent about it, so you really need to break that down and say, what exactly do we mean by being transparent? But really, I think what I heard about that and what I talk about when I think about transparency is that, yep, we might show both the challenges and the benefits of decisions or conversations, that's being transparent. And everyone wanted, it was really interesting because it didn't matter what engagement it was, and it kind of was like, it didn't matter what that personal belief or background was, everyone wanted neutrality. And when you try to say, what does neutrality mean? It's, it's kind of the human nature of, I am not welcomed here for my belief, I am not welcomed here for my background. And wanting to create neutrality in what is being taught is a different conversation than feeling that they belong. And so there was a little bit of a disconnect there, but I think the way to go about that is to really try to find ways to build trust and engagement with all of your stakeholders. And then finally, you know, usually my job is just to come in here and kind of facilitate things, but I was asked to say, what kind of recommendations would you have based on my experience of different schools and 25 years of doing this work? And so I, we came up with three strong kind of general recommendations, and when I reviewed this data with my colleagues as well, who have done this all over the country, really putting together a strategic communication plan, I know Bobby is probably already working on that. But, you know, how is it that we communicate with one another and as part of that, not just the tactics of communication? By that we mean, you know, yes, social media is important, websites are important, newsletters are important, those are great tactics to do, but what's the overall strategy that we're trying to accomplish and aligning that with your strategic plan as a district? So that really we're providing lots more opportunities for engagement, which leads into continued engagement. I think the turnout at the meeting, I think the fact that you had a lot of, a good turnout on your survey and focus groups, is that there's a lot of questions, and I think the pandemic, we all kind of shut down and stepped back, and so now we have to lean into engaging one another. The most common thing that came up from students and staff was questions about the schedule. I didn't, I was like, okay, I don't, I can't solve that problem for you, I don't really know what's happening, but just questions about how we're changing the schedule, now the 7th, 8th graders are going to be in the hallway at the same time as the 9th through 12th graders, I think I have that right, or something, whatever the bell schedules were. But just again, an opportunity to kind of lean in and say, okay, what, how do we do some more engagement around that to those who are most impacted by it, particularly the students? And then because that neutrality word kept coming up, a recommendation that we have found works really well in communities where there is kind of this discord going on, is to really come together as a community and say, what are our district core values? Because everyone has their personal values, but what are we saying are the core values as a district? And I don't know where you're, what that process is, and again, I'm just giving you recommendations, you don't have to follow them. But as you, as you can define those core values as more than just, we believe in integrity or something, and then you define what that means for Delano, it's kind of like you have the Tiger Way or something like that that is at every school. But how do you make that part of a process where the community is part of developing those? And so it really permeates into the community, because you do have that nucleus, Delano community, right? So you're not in all these other communities, this is a pretty solid, tight group. And so how do you build it in a way that the community come together and say, this is what our values are? So, because so much of what is being argued in front of school boards and school districts these days is more based on personal beliefs. And so if we could fall back to, I understand your personal belief, but here's what we decided as a community were our district core values. And then the last thing is that this was a, one of the engagement participants, and every now and then a quote comes out and then I just need to pull it, and it says, the kids will be the ones to help us grow, they come up with the best ideas, we just need to stop putting up roadblocks in front of them. And I wanted to end with that because I think we know that we're here for the students and the students, as evidenced tonight with History Day, have great research and can articulate themselves very well, and so we just need to make sure that we're creating those paths where students can thrive. Any other questions? I know that was long, I apologize, but.
I have a really quick one. I think those results were really valid and you did an amazing job kind of engaging everyone in general. But I think one thing too is like the whole seasonal thing, and that might be completely like different for each person.
Yep.
But obviously, like, as Minnesotans, we obviously tend to go in more of like an angry, like, kind of like prevailing stage. In the months of like February or November, December, like those kinds of months, so.
Yeah.
But I think you did overall an amazing job, and I just wanted to compliment you in general.
Thank you, yeah.
I remember seeing you too.
I was going to say, especially after this winter, I think we're all like, oh, seriously. And I think that's a good point. I would say that generally when we do those surveys kind of mid-year, it's not all that, I don't feel like seasonally they necessarily, because you're still kind of in that pre-holiday joy.
And you get the most out of it too, I think.
But if you were to do that, like, you know, the last month when it's just been snowing and raining, and then it's 80, and then it's 12, you know, I think that people probably a little more negative. I think you're right, I think that's very astute.
Appreciate the time and effort.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the consent agenda. This agenda has all of our financials, everything, we do the board minutes, all of that is included for you guys to peruse if you so choose. Do I have a motion to approve the, sorry, consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Amy, do we have a second?
Second, Jim.
Second by Jim, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on. My mic is really, really hot tonight, so I think every thought I have will come out. Resolution for the acceptance of gifts. Where is DES PI $227.09 for Delano Elementary and $3,957.09 for the Tiger Fund Fair expenses? DIS PI $500 for MCA breakfast and $2,000 for the mental health speaker. United Way $4,529 for school-based therapy. Hockey Boosters Club $2,325 reimbursement for boys state hockey tickets. Delano Tiger Athletic Booster Club $4,333 for boys hockey reimbursement for all seasons purchase. Dance Booster Club $1,472.70 and $6,282.49 for invitational and expense reimbursement. And Calveret Inc., $1,000 for Orange Crush Robotics Team 3026, FRC. The previous gifts have been generously donated to the Delano Public Schools with the conditions listed above. Do I have a motion for the resolution of the acceptance of gifts?
I'll move.
A motion by Ryan, second by Sue. Any further discussion? We'll move to a roll call vote.
All right, Board Member Rosen?
Aye.
Board Member Johnson?
Aye.
Board Member Black?
Aye.
Board Member Devo?
Aye.
Board Member Gerke?
Aye.
Board Member Baker?
Aye.
And Board Member Showst?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to personnel matters. Personnel matters are listed on the screen, there's a lot going on there, it is just generally the hiring season for sports and things like that, and for those who don't come back next year, their replacements are being hired. Do I have a motion to accept the personnel matters?
Baker moves.
Motion by Ms. Baker, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Sue. Do we have any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Public comment. School patrons are given the opportunity to address the school board regarding items that are not on the agenda. All patrons will be asked to state their name and address for the record. While the board appreciates feedback from the public in this forum, board members will not comment on or discuss topics brought up by speakers at this time. In accordance with Delano Public Schools Policy 206, the school board retains the discretion to limit discussions to a reasonable period of time as determined by the school board. If a group of organization, group or organization wishes to address the school board on a topic, the school board reserves the right to require the designation of one or more representatives or spokespersons to speak on behalf of the group or organization. Do we have anyone here for public comment tonight? Do we have anyone here for public comment? And last call, anyone here for public comment? Moving on to administrative reports. Superintendent Shane.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I just want to share just a few things with you this evening. First, the state report, major highlights that's come out of the states, the education omnibus funding bill and policy has passed the House. I believe the Senate is due to yet pass their education funding bill and policy bill yet today. The next step will be establishing a conference committee process, and that's where basically they've already agreed on the parameters of the dollars to be spent, they're each looking at $2.2 billion, but they have different variations of how they want to get there. And again, still the concern that's still in some of the omnibus bills are some unfunded mandates that are going to require districts, so we just got to see how that all falls out. So that'll go through there. Both have, like I said, there hasn't been any other updates, it was a slower season around the Easter break time period, but now they have, now that the omnibus bills are coming out of each of the houses in the legislature, the conference committee process shouldn't take too long, and they have until the 22nd of May to finish all of their business going forward. I shared with the board earlier today too, we do have some building and ground projects that are going on, just for people to know. This summer, we're going to be tearing up Tiger Drive from Elm Avenue to the stop sign right by the district offices, so we'll be doing that. It's obviously, if you've driven through there, you'll need to know why we need to repave that, that area of Tiger Drive. We also are replacing a roof at the community ed building. Those are the two major projects that will take some long-term facility maintenance dollars to be there. We have a weather station that will be going up yet this spring on the, would be the northwest side of the high school, up the backside there. We do have solar arrays that were going to be put on the roofs of the intermediate school and the high school, and then some safety projects at the high school and the elementary school as well. The south entrance for the TAC, those members can now check in through the vestibule a little bit easier, or will be, coming next, by the end of the summer. The front office of the high school is going to be redesigned a bit for a more secure flow of people coming and visiting the high school or coming to the office. And then we're just replacing a door that's more secure in the elementary leading out into the school from the office. So that's just what I wanted to update you on, my brief report. Any questions that I could entertain at this time?
Any questions for Mr. Shane?
Thank you, Mr. Shane. Moving on, up next is Mr. Voight. Nope, I lied, Ms. Thompson. Got you all excited, and then I had to change it.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'm presenting to you tonight on behalf of the intermediate school, I just want to give a few quick updates, starting with some of the day-to-day things we're working on in our site-based team. Our site-based team right now, as we're wrapping up the year, our main focus is just working on those handbook updates, making sure we're all on the same page with some of our expectations, and then also working together just to coordinate the numerous end-of-year events. We kind of save all the fun for the intermediate school until May, and every day is something new, so a lot of just coordinating going on with that group. For professional development, we had our two-hour late start last week, we had a presenter, Ethan Schwer, come in to speak to the whole district, just a general overview about the multi-tiered systems of support, kind of implementation that we're hoping to really dive into next year with our teachers. So he presented to the district in a large group, and then we came back to DIS to do some small group debriefing. Our time was pretty limited when all was said and done, so we really just kind of focused on specifically, you know, Ethan shared the big picture, what does that look like for us at the intermediate school, what will our focus areas be, which I think kind of calms some of the anxiety in the questions, you know, sometimes when you hear about a big district, you know, initiative, I hate to use that word, but you know, there's a lot of questions from teachers, what does this mean for me, what's it going to look like, is this one more thing? So it was just nice to have some time after that presentation to really talk through it with teachers and realize we have a lot of really good things already in place, there's a few things we're going to do some learning about, and I think we had some good, good feedback then from that conversation. One of the main pieces that will be kind of our focus areas for the intermediate school is learning about class-wide interventions, that's an area of growth for us, so we'll work on learning about those next year. And then also, we're implementing a universal screener for social and emotional skills for our kids, which we've never done before, so that'll be interesting to gather some data and kind of just talk through, once we have the data, how do we use it and what interventions then can we put in place from it? So that'll be some learning for us as well. And then finally, we just, you know, we have a lot of events coming up, mainly in April is, our big focus is testing, it's MCA season, so last week we finished our reading tests, our kids did wonderful, we're really, really proud of them. We've got math coming up starting tomorrow, we'll hit the ground running again with math, science is next week, and then we don't give our kids any break, we just go right into fast testing, get it all done, like I said, and then May is for, May is for fun, we have lots of fun things going on. I said. And then May is for, May is for fun. We have lots of fun things going on. We have, let's see, track and field day, variety show, field trips. So just a lot of fun things to look forward to. I do want to highlight that May is Mental Health Month. And so our social worker has been working really hard on putting together a series of, a lot of really great activities and learning opportunities for our kids to focus on that during the month of May. So I can share a little bit more about that in May, but we're really looking forward to focusing on that with our kids as well. And then finally, just again, to recognize our History Day kids, they did an amazing job. But also our teachers, they pour in a lot of time before and after school, during their lunch, to those kids. And we also had a number of successful fifth-grade math masters. I don't want to forget about them. They went to their competition as well. Lot of kids came home with medals from that. So just really proud of our kids and how they're, they're ending their year really strong. Comments or questions?
Any questions for Ms. Thompson? Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next now, Mr. Voight.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. It's a pleasure to give you some highlights for Delano High School. And I always start with some recognitions, and I have three this evening. First, I'd like to congratulate our Jazz I and Jazz II students, who at a recent competition, a contest on Monday, April 17th, they both received superior ratings, which is the best rating that you can get. So congratulations to those students and to Mr. Daly, the director. Yesterday, we had the pleasure of inducting 43 new students into National Honor Society. And as you know, if you attend one of those induction ceremonies, it is the preeminent recognition for high school students across the country, recognizing those students who demonstrate exceptional qualities within character, leadership, scholarship, and service. So welcome to those students. And I just accidentally turned off my notepad right in the middle of my presentation. Now, we didn't have anybody go to Nationals for History Day, but we did have a third-place team who's a runner-up for Nationals. And I'd like to congratulate Harry Stenbeck, Alexis Zens, and Joey Taylor, who earned a third-place award at the state History Day competition. Of course, you heard all about the, the local competition, the regionals, and all those sorts of things. So those students obviously went there. We did have, I don't know, three additional teams that were honorable mentions during the state competition as well, at the eighth grade level. For our site-based team, we've been working for the past month and a half, again, preparing our proposed changes to the student handbook, which of course you'll have the pleasure of reviewing next month during work session. We should finish up that process tomorrow morning and then again, bring those to you as stated in May. And then this is another very busy time of the year for us as well. You're probably aware that we do have prom on Saturday. Grand March is open to the public at 5:00 PM. Doors open at 4:00 in the TAC. Senior Awards Night is Wednesday, May 3rd. All are welcome to attend Senior Awards Night, as that's our kickoff really to our celebration season, I call it, where we recognize the achievements of our students. Seniors Last Day is also our Spring Fling Day, and that's Friday, May 26th. And of course, our last day of school is Friday, June 2nd. And of course, graduation is Sunday, June 4th. And I'm looking forward to that day as well, and hoping that you all, as usual, can participate in that wonderful event. So with that, I'll be able to answer any questions that you might have about high school.
Any questions for Mr. Voight? Thank you for all you're doing. It's going to be a busy month for you guys. Up next, Mrs. Schultz.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Pleasure to speak with you on behalf of the elementary this evening. It's going to sound very similar. We've got a lot of common things happening this time of year and with our late start in handbooks. So site-based handbook revisions, we are working on those. We did our mid-year SIP review, and that is complete, so we can kind of track where we are with our goal progress. And then with our site-based committee working on our vision and mission statement for the elementary, our next phase is to kind of gather feedback from all staff and some student groups as well. Quick staffing update for the elementary. We are currently interviewing for administrative assistants this week, Cindy Selko's retiring. And then music teacher next week, interviews. We have a couple one-year leave teacher positions that we're going to be filling. Those will be posted kind of K3, just because we still might have some internal movement. We also have an AdSIS position that we're going to be posting for, and then some long-term subpositions in the fall. So we will be busy finding great team members, I'm sure, to join our staff. Another letters update for you, I know that that was kind of big, gaining a lot of traction, which it still is. But now, we're having some of the participants be complete, and they are finished with that big, long PD that they have been going through. So that's been exciting for them to see and kind of submit those last final things. They've put in a lot of work with that. And Diane Pullman is going to be a letters facilitator within our school district. So she's going to be able to present at any of our buildings and to kind of help implement some of the great strategies that we have learned through letters. So we're excited to have her be able to do that for us. As Ms. Thompson mentioned, Ethan Schwer was here for the two-hour late, and then we went back to our building as well. At the elementary, we're going to be really honing in on that tier-one design and delivery, putting into practice some of the things that a lot of our teachers have learned about through letters. And then also, we're going to be beefing up some of our data review and our SST team. I think that's an area that we definitely can grow in at the elementary. We have good gut feelings, but we really want to make sure we're being objective when placing students in intervention and getting them what they need for that. Also, the SABERS Social Emotional Academic Behavior Risk Screener is the one part of the MTSS portion that we don't have as far as universal screeners. We have them for reading, we have them for math, and this is that SEL kind of component for that. So at the elementary school, it will just be teachers doing the rating scales for the kids. And then we'll do that in November and in March. And we're also making some adjustments to our social worker as seeing her more of that intervention. Sometimes kids will see a social worker and then they'll just get so comfortable and just be there all year long without really growing in those skills. So we're really kind of trying to have her be that intervention, but then also there, of course, because there's different acute situations that come up. And she's wonderful for the risk assessments and anything that comes our way. But we really want to try to utilize her as part of our intervention process to support MTSS. And then a couple of events. We had our art fair, and that was a big success. We have field trips, math MCAs coming up. Quick update on our kindergarten enrollment. I think initially, we're in the 150s. After roundup, we're in the 160s now. So we've got a few more of those. And then we have the Tiger Dash is this Saturday, and then Field Day is May 12th. So any questions or comments?
Any questions for Ms. Schultz? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. Moving on. Next, we have Business Manager, Mary Reader.
Just have a couple quick things. The district has advertised for bread and milk bids or quotes for the next school year. And the deadline to submit is Wednesday, May 10th at 1:30 PM. And those quotes will be acted on and approved by the board at the May meeting. And we have also advertised for Student Transportation Service quotes for the next three school years. And the deadline for those quotes is tomorrow, Tuesday, April 25th at 10:00 AM. And the district will review the quotes in the next few weeks. And if direct negotiations with the qualified vendors are required, the Transportation Negotiations Committee will be notified, so meetings can be scheduled. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Reader?
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to community education.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thanks for having me here to talk about community ed activities. My report will be relatively brief tonight. When it comes to community ed, this is kind of an in-between season for us. Coordinators just spent the last couple months building out a 40-page brochure, which will hit mailboxes this week. That is up. Our brochure is typically about 32 pages, so this one is going to have a lot of information on it, a lot of offerings. And we continue to expand our brochure to work with other community organizations to help partner and promote their activities. So we're going to continue to go down that pathway as we work with local, local organizations to partner in this area. And you'll see that with our next brochure. So how this has worked, we typically try to get an electronic brochure. They can produce that far quicker. So that was distributed about a week ago on a multi, multitude of ways. And now the print copy will come out this week, and registration will officially open on Monday of next week. And from that point, it is a fairly hectic process as registrations go quick and, and things fill up fast. Another event I want to talk about is in our early childhood program, they do an event called Touch a Truck, held at Central Park, first Saturday of May every year. They have over 500 kids and families that come to that. It's a free event. They bring in fire trucks and other service vehicles and military Humvees. And part of it is they land a helicopter at Central Park during the middle of the event. So it's a pretty cool event. They bring in food trucks. It's all free. And we do leave, we do leave spots out there where we accept free will donations. And I do bring that up because we have kind of shifted our focus on some of our fundraising efforts and our, and our dedicating those dollars towards a capital campaign for building a new playground at our building. And I bring that up because we're, we really want to start focusing on being able to build something like that. But doing it in a way that we're a little bit more proactive. These donations of the past would just kind of go into our funds. We would use them in various ways. And we want to dedicate that to a relatively large capital expenditure. It's going to take us some time to get there. But these types of events go, any of those donations will go directly back into doing something pretty cool at our building. So. And then the last piece on the activity side is we will have, coming up on May 3rd, we'll have our third signing day. So three times during the year, any athlete that is going to play at the next level, we'll do a signing day in which we recognize those athletes. Those parents can come in, grandparents, and be a part of that activity. And we've had a number of students in all three signing days. So it's been a really great year. A lot of really accomplished student athletes that are going to be playing at the next level. And it's kind of cool to be able to recognize them that way. And then the last piece, I know we've all talked about the weather. And I know at a previous board meeting, we were trying to figure out how is this going to work for spring sports. So since we've started spring season, we've already canceled, postponed, or rescheduled 60 contests in a relatively short period of time. So hopefully things open up. You know, by the time we get to May, we're going to be playing games four days out of the week. The spring season's already compact, and it'll continue to be that way. But we're doing the best we can to get things done. Every time we have to reschedule, we have to make sure there's a bus available. We're limited there. Make sure there's a driver for the bus available. We're even more limited there. And then to make sure we can get officials, and very limited there. So our associate AD is out on the field, umping a baseball game today to make sure we could get one of those rescheduled games done when there wasn't officials available. So we'll do everything we can to get these contests done to make sure it's a decent season for our athletes. So any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next up, Student Board Representative.
So I went up to the schools this month, and what we learned from the elementary school is the, for student feedback, the third graders really liked Janelle from the new social worker. And they thought that she heavily influenced how they did on their MCAs and the calmness and everything else. And in the intermediate school, MCAs were in session. The students were really excited about their field trips coming up. And overall, I'm excited for summer to be right around the corner. And then in the high school, there was a new schedule in place for the month, for next, for the 2023, 2024 school year. And it consists of the seven-period schedule, it looked like. And they were, kids were, it was kind of confused, it was kind of confusing process getting that schedule and everything else, because usually they get it kind of during the summer. But this year, they actually, most students got theirs ready. So, and there was a scheduling error with the choir and then the sound revolution and journalism. So I think they got that figured out. But students were overall, they're excited for, I mean, my grades excited for senior year, and the students are excited to move up a level. So, yeah.
Thank you. Any questions for?
Speaking of, when do we select next year's board rep?
That is actually coming up, I think, either next week or in two weeks.
Okay.
So that's right, that's right around the corner, too. So.
Do we have candidates that have signed up? Or, or does that announcement come out next week?
Comes out next week. I have to talk to Mr. Voight about how we facilitate that process soon as I get back. It'll be very similar from last year.
Yeah. I just didn't remember if we'd already done that.
All right, moving on to board reports. First up is Masiko.
So I have the March minutes for Masiko. The one thing that I want to call out, you can read through, it's a pretty lengthy board meeting, but the U.S. Department of Education Office of Special Education Programs, that's quite the title that you put on a business card, but anyway, they issued a memo clarifying the requirements for special education personnel under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, IDEA. And the results of these clarifications, Masiko will be in a position to evaluate their current paraprofessionals to make sure that they are highly qualified status, and developing a plan to help existing employees obtain this status if they don't have it already. So there'll be additional trainings that will be required to ensure that everybody is compliant. So just wanted to call that out, because that's going to be a significant lift. And obviously, we've done a ton of work to maintain and retain staff. So that's going to be, become a challenge. That will also impact member districts as well. So it'll impact us from a non-special education aspect.
Do you remember what the deadline is on that? Does it by next year? Do they have a couple years to enforce that, or maybe Mary or Matt now?
It was...
I think that the teacher piece is, as we, it's just a reminder that, hey, you have to be compliant. The reason why that came out on teachers is because the federal, the federal government doesn't recognize the tier system of licensure in the state of Minnesota. So tier one is not recognized as highly qualified for a teacher licensure. I don't believe, we might currently have just one in our district, but we're working on to rectify that. And then I think down the road, it's, with paraprofessionals, it'll just be a constant review.
I think they were working with resource, resources.
Training solutions.
Yeah, training solutions to have a couple of really solid options for them to get the training they need in order to become, to get that kind of status. So there was a path, there was a reasonable path forward, if you will, but just like everything, going to take time and effort. So.
And there's some clear rubric around what qualifies.
Correct.
Highly qualified for paras.
Yes.
If they don't have a college degree, they can pass the parapro test.
Okay.
And that usually is done up through research, training, and solutions. It had been in the past. I don't know if they're still moving forward with that, but they might be bringing that back.
Yep. There was a couple of different options. So everything else is pretty standard. You can read through.
To District Advisory Committee?
Yep.
Oh, sorry.
So that's me as well.
Questions for you?
Oh.
Does anybody else have any questions for?
Nope.
Amy on Masiko?
So we had, April 17th was the final District Advisory Council Committee meeting for the school year. It was pretty robust, a lot to tackle in that time. I think one of the really exciting pieces, it's always been a part, a part of the process, but was the development of what is called the Stakeholder Survey Feedback Form. So there's, I think, now a really good step forward for the curriculum professionals to really engage with key stakeholders to say, what was your experience with this particular element of curriculum that's under review? So that as, again, the professionals are evaluating the standards and unpacking them and figuring out what changes need to be, to be considered, at least they have that element of feedback form in there. And I believe that that will be facilitated in some way, probably through school, and it's a very simple, just what was your experience? How would you rate it? How would you, you know, what would you like to see?
And that's students?
Nope, that is parents. Yeah. Certainly, there was a very robust conversation about how to engage the student population in that. We're going to start with the parents, I think, and then go forward. Not we, the, the committee felt like.
Is that something that's recommended that stakeholder?
Yeah, it's always been there.
Okay.
It's just a matter of how you facilitate that. And so I think by having this really nice, robust Google document, that they can actually, in a, in an easy way, ingest and evaluate, and then take that back to the appropriate teams that are doing the, the work, I think is a good addition. So we'll see how it goes. And then, of course, there were two or three, excuse, excuse me, three areas that were under curriculum review this year, social studies. So as we all know, this is one that's been a multi-year process because of the different back and forth and the state coming. And so I think they were excited to cautiously kind of move forward slowly in terms of how they evaluate those standards and do some work this summer about looking at some of the classes and how they would want to tackle the changes that would be needed. They're still very much in review. Then, health. So again, seven through 12 health. We'll see some changes with ninth grade health, getting some increased time to get to add some depth to their current instructive. And some of the elements of the standards around reproductive and sexual health will be moved from high school health into ninth grade health. So I think that was a big change that we saw come out of, of, of that cycle. And then last but not least, the language arts curriculum review, that is one that throughout the year, we've been meeting on. And they definitely got to a point where they were ready to present back up to that committee the associated materials and texts that will be um, the associated materials and texts that will be, uh, associated with those curriculum classes. Some being removed, um, for lack of relevance or if not, and some that they're maintaining and new ones that are coming into play for that. And, um, then the other change for next year will be just a shift in the time period. So in the past, the committee started their work in September, uh, to focus on the world's best workforce report. Uh, but they're gonna, so they're gonna move the, the first curriculum committee meeting into October.
Any questions for me?
I will say, I was very excited this year to see, um, the addition of quite a few community members onto this committee. In the past, it's been pretty sparse, but I would say there's maybe up eight to 10, um, that have now joined. And, and just as a great sounding board for these, uh, for these professionals to be a part of the discussion and, and be a sounding board. So it's great to have them there. That's it? Thanks.
Next up, right technical center?
A couple of good news items. Uh, the construction class is house sold. So that's always good when that happens. Uh, there was an open house, I believe, on the 17th. That was very well attended. I think there was almost 500, uh, kids that visited during the open house. Uh, and then of course, being on the buildings and ground committee, um, the building and grounds need a lot of work. So I believe we'll vote here in a bit on contributing our portion of the eight-member district, I think we're responsible for 14, 15% of what they're asking for. And the rest is posted in the minutes.
Any other questions for you? Moving on, we have Schools for Equity in Education, and that is the one I attended this month. We had Representative Edelson speak on her bill, which is the REED Act. She just discussed the training requirements and the funding provisions. Took a lot of concerns from the community or from the crowd, um, about how it's being funded, especially for schools like ours that went ahead and trained a bunch of our teachers at our own cost. And now they're talking about reimbursing schools who train. And so there were superintendents that came forward and said, wait a second. For those of us that were early adopters and wanted to get involved and take care of our students without being forced, what, what's that kickback gonna be for us? And Edelson had said she hadn't thought about it, but that she would take it back and that she had a $1 million provision in there, um, for some of that stuff. But as Oatana Schools pointed out, if we did $1 million for their staff at their hourly rate of pay, she'd be short about $2 million just for them themselves. So, there's, there's some conversation there on how to fund that. The REED Act is looking at training for all teachers in, um, curriculum or in areas, uh, professional development that will help kids with disabilities. It also has funding for new curriculum. So if you're curri-, if you choose to change your curriculum to one of their approved curriculums, there is funding there to make that happen. That is, or was going to committee. I'm assuming it will make it into conference committee because it is being headed by the party in charge. So it makes sense. They also discussed the increase in membership dues. And that is being done because the two larger districts in C are paying upwards of $30,000 a year to be a member of it. All districts like ours are paying just over $2,000. And so what they've done is they've decreased those districts to $12,000 and then tried to level that out a little bit by adding $1,000 or so to other districts to try. Their, their thought process was better to keep them in at a smaller amount than lose them entirely. And so that discussion was had. And then they talked about, um, is C serving their districts? Um, is C's mission what it needs to be to currently serve our districts or are there changes that need to be made? Um, the executive director is likely going to leave after next year. Um, and so next year may be focused, um, on how does C serve us? What do we want them doing? Um, what's the best use of our money, um, and their time? And that is pretty much it. Any questions? Alright, moving on to old business, which we have none of. And now on to new business. First up is to approve the resolution for right technical centers, long-term facility maintenance program. I believe we've all had a chance to review it. Matt, do you have anything you want to share on it?
If our portion of the LTFM, they do $167,000 a year divided by all of the member districts. And our portion is about 10%, a little over $16,000.
16?
16,000, yes. Correct.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution for right technos-, technical centers, long-term facility maintenance program?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Motion by Jim, second by Corey. Any further discussion? Then move to a roll call vote.
Alright, Board Member Johnson?
Aye.
Board Member Black?
Aye.
Board Member Deppa?
Aye.
Board Member Gerke?
Aye.
And Board Member Baker?
Aye.
Board Member Shouse?
Aye.
And Board Member Roger?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up is policy 631, the selection of media center materials policy. Um, we've had extensive discussion about this, both last month and this month in work session. Do I have a motion to approve policy 631, the selection of media center materials policy? Okay, I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by myself and a second by Sue. Any further discussion? Alright, with that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
One opposed? Motion passes. Alright. Moving on, up next is the guidelines for reconsidering media resources and materials. Um, we also discussed that in work session, um, and there were some changes made between last month and this month. Do I have a motion to approve the guidelines for so, for reconsidering media resources and materials? Alright, I will make that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Jim. Any further discussion on that?
I just think this is a good start to the framework. I, I just want us to caution around anything that is censorship in the form of censorship and that we stick to the kind of the guidelines that are set from the different library associations and really lean on to the work that they've done in terms of their reconsideration guidelines and policies and toolkits and leave it to the professionals and hope we don't get there.
Yeah, I'd like to add, I, I would hope there are ways that the board can remain, um, updated on how the process is going so we can understand the, the impact of policy 631, both intended and unintended consequences of that.
And I think I'll echo that, like, that we have an option or an opportunity here to meet the needs of the parents that came forward who asked for the ability to parent their children and make those restrictions as needed, but also to allow the parents that came forward and said, I don't want my child's reading restricted to have that ability as well. And so I think this, this, these guidelines are a good start in the right direction. Any other further discussion? Alright, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alright, and with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.